Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all to the September 25th, 2018 Regular USD 500 Meeting. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation and one God in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Westfall, would you please call the row?
Harold Brown.
Present.
Maxine Drew.
Present.
Janie Humphries.
Present.
Brenda Jones.
Present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Present.
Valdivia Nguyen.
Present.
Stacy Agar.
Present.
Thank you. Need a motion, please, to approve the regular agenda?
So be it.
And seconded to approve the regular agenda. Any discussion? All in favor say yea aye.
Yes.
All opposed, nay. Motion passed. Ms. Westfall, when you called Mr. Brown's name, he thought he was, we were telling him happy birthday. So for the record, he's, he's...
Thank you very much.
The birthday person today. He stood up for himself. All right. Thank you. Communications, Dr. Faust.
Yes. So, we have been on the trail moving forward as we've been. This week, we have just started our meeting with our principals in some of our most impacted schools, we'll call it those. And so we had about four meetings today. And giving them the support over the past week, we farmed out what I call all hands on deck. So any, all of our instructional coaches have been, who were here in our building are now in schools. They've been pushed to help teachers. Our first goal is to make sure that, of course, student, students are educated. That's our goal. And then we're wanting to make sure that teachers have the capacity. And if they don't have the capacity, we have the people on site to help and support them with that so that it's not in one centralized area. The work goes in the schools. We're wanting to make sure that we have that support with our teachers or for our teachers in our buildings. So that's where we are this week. We're continuing with our Listening and Learning Tours. We had one last week, and we'll have one next week. The one next week will be at Washington High School. And so we're, we're looking forward to our Listening and Learning Tour and learning from our communities and going back and seeing what we need to do as a unit to fix or actually to celebrate in that nature. But we are, we're moving forward.
Amen.
Good job.
Good.
Thank you, Dr. Faust. And we look forward to hearing updates on progress. As you started out by saying, we have been on the move. We were fortunate to attend the J.E. Dunn Minority Vendor Luncheon, and that was quite informative. We were at the NAACP banquet. Attended the first Listening Tour at Harmon. And this Saturday, Ms. Jones and I were at the Empower Up. What would I call it? Kind of a neighborhood rally hosted by the Village Initiative. So that is something important that I just reminded Ms. Jones that she was there with me. But still, there's a lot to do. There's a lot to engage with the community, and that is, is how we, we know what, what we're doing. So thank you. Other board members?
Well, there's been a lot of football and volleyball games, middle school and high school. Sometimes you can go from the middle school one into the high school ones if you time it right, right, Brenda. There's been soccer. And like Dr. Nguyen said, the NAACP 100 Year Celebration was very uplifting and informative. And the J.E. Dunn Workshop, or the, they have the vendors come in and show them what things are going to be coming up for bid, and they advertise their minority, I can't say all the letters, I'll trip on them. But they have classes that they, they have for the vendors so that they can learn how to bid, to get pre-certified, and to help them work out all kinds of little things that you have to know about when you run a business. I thought that was very helpful for the people there. The room was very full. So a lot of companies are taking advantage of the J.E. Dunn, reaching out to help. I also came across an article from Forbes, is the big standardized test a big standardized flop article? And I thought it was really, really interesting, and I wanted to share it with the other board members. It's talking about, it refers back to No Child Left Behind and all the different things that we did then that we thought were going to work and they didn't. So it's just something to, to think about as we go through with our improvements.
Oh. Others?
I also, I also attended what she's...
Empower Up.
Yeah, Empower Up. I couldn't think of the name of it. And the J. Dunn Workshop, along with the volleyball and football games, NAACP banquet. Is that it? I think that's it.
I attended Schlegel's Homecoming Game, Wyandotte's Homecoming Game, as well as visited a couple of schools in the area. I also attended the NAACP 100 Year Banquet Celebration. And it was great to see Levance Meeks Jr. He was selling a book titled Survivor of the Fatherless. He's a graduate from our USD 500. He's a young gentleman. I think he may have graduated about three years ago. But it was great to see how he was able to create a book and publish it and get a lot of supporters from some of the experiences he learned here in Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools. So that was just an awesome thing to see a young author who wanted to be there to represent a book. So I did purchase a book from him in support, and it's a really good book, just talking about just surviving, being fatherless.
Well, I also attended the J.E. Dunn Meeting. I had an opportunity for the first time in my life to attend a homecoming parade at Wyandotte High School.
Oh, yeah.
And it was very exciting. It was hot, but it was very exciting as we went through and saw the students as they were celebrating their homecoming. I also attended the NAACP 100 Year Celebration. And then on September the 18th, as a way of getting to know me as well as getting to know him, I met with Dr. Faust one afternoon just to let him know that I'm in full support of what he's trying to do here in the Kansas City, Kansas School District.
Beautiful. Go ahead.
I too went to the J. Dunn Meeting, and it was interesting, and it was nice to see so many vendors. And my prayer is that some way that we can all work together. I think it's important, people who live in this area, pay taxes, support our schools, we got to figure out a way that we can support them. So I thought that was good. I also went to the NAACP 100 Year Anniversary. That was intriguing. Sunday, I went to a program for the Divine Nine, which was the historical nine black Greek organizations. And it was to promote, to get out to vote, as well as to talk about scholarships, how we can help young people on the KCK and the Kansas City, Missouri side. So that was good, and that was intriguing.
All right. I also, I don't want to be real duplicitous, but I also attended the NAACP 100 Year Banquet and the J.E. Dunn Symposium that was held last week. And it was really kind of enlightening to attend the J.E. Dunn process because what they did is, I saw there's a lot, they have the intent and really make opportunity available for contractors to get, become engaged in the process. And it is, it's kind of cumbersome sometimes, but you have to go through, you have to jump through the hoops, and, and it sometimes it can kind of seem like it's, it's kind of hard to understand. But if, if you do that, then you will surely qualify to be part of, of their construction process. So I was really encouraged about that.
Just a reminder, board members, when you get a chance, delve into the year-end academic profiles. Our retreat is not far away, but this is not a fast read. So delve into it so that we'll be able to have a meaningful discussion. That's it, Dr. Faust. Swearing in of police officers.
Good evening, Madam President.
Good evening.
Dr. Faust, board members.
Good evening.
Guests and fellow officers. This evening, we have three officers for swearing in. Would Officer Jake Samuelson, Mark Sheets, and Jeffrey Johnson please approach us up here, please?
Circle B.
They're going to come up here. Who's delivering the oath of office? Thank you.
Don't you swear in? Yeah. Go with the Bible.
Right up here, gentlemen.
Would you do with circle B?
Yep.
Stand this way. Very much.
The law enforcement oath of honor. If you would repeat after me, please. On my honor.
On my honor.
I will never betray my badge.
I will never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character or the public trust.
My character or the public trust.
I will always have the courage.
I will always have the courage.
To hold myself.
To hold myself.
And others accountable for our actions.
And others accountable for our actions.
I will always uphold the Constitution.
I will always uphold the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Kansas.
And of the State of Kansas.
My community.
My community.
And the agency I serve.
And the agency I serve.
Thank you, gentlemen.
We come now to the community comment policy. Ms. Westfall, do we have?
Do not.
Do not have. Now, board updates. We welcome Dr. Kelly Mather for a bond update.
Dr. Nguyen, Dr. Faust, board members, good evening.
Good evening.
Let's see. Where shall we begin?
And that is entitled what?
This is entitled, I believe, September 25th, 2018 Board Update.
Okay.
In your board docs.
This is...
Read it.
Well, first of all, I feel like maybe we should just, I want to come up here and say we're taking a breath, but we're really not taking a breath with the bond projects. I will have Doug Clements, the Director of the Shop, come up and give you some pictures and do the kind of the overview. I just wanted to highlight the monthly update that we do with the board each month. And then we will actually be reviewing the bid results from one of our projects with J. Dunn. So Lee will come up and do that. So it sounds like a lot, but we're going to try to get through it in expedient way. But sometimes you just got to stop and take a breath because it feels like we should be kind of resting after this, you know, I told you that we tore up the 12 schools, but we haven't stopped yet. So now we're just moving into the next phase of the project. So it's kind of exciting. But wanted to show you that this monthly bond update report, same as always, as I said, what I like to point out to you is what will be expended in the prior month. So in August, we had seventeen, just over $17.6 million in expenditures. So all of the above, that is not different. It's just all of the work packages that you have. And wanted to show you, this is the easiest way to do this without trying to keep doing it bigger and smaller, so bear with me. So as a result of our running balance, then, of total, actual expenditures, we have $192 million, $650,000 of expenditures with the balance of $175 million. We drop down, and to your left, you see your guaranteed maximum price packages. These are the packages that have in fact been bid out. We are going to talk about the Rosedale Middle School Work Package Number 15 this evening and share with you the bid results of that. So those have been bid out. I keep a running total of what's actually been bid to date, so you see $87 million. That doesn't necessarily mean it's actual expenditures yet because we haven't paid everybody for everything because projects are all at various phases of construction. So that's why I kind of haven't built it in, and I have a separate number that I've kept consistent the whole time for the actual expenditures. Will always be less than the GMPs. And eventually, it will zero itself out over time. So a couple of highlights for forecasting purposes for you is at the very bottom. Wanted to talk a little bit about Work Package Six. Make sure I have them all here. For Harmon High School, we're continuing a lot of work with Harmon and Washington that are both in Work Package Six. This is the complete replumbing of these schools and also construction of their secure entrances. And also for Harmon High School will be the replacement of the full storefront, so the whole front of that school will look different and more welcoming. Many of you have been in there where we've done the academy spaces and done, have completed the lighting on the first floor. We are going to extend that lighting into the second floor. So it'll be a very bright, brand-new lighting school. So we're excited about that. But we're still in the design process for all of that. Work Package Seven is a John Fisk Elementary School addition. That's the, where we're adding the kitchen and the multipurpose room, as well as remodeling some classrooms for that school so we can eliminate the modular unit. I know that you're all fans of that, as I am, that we want to get rid of those modular units when we can. So this will put kids, our students, all back in the school building appropriately. So, so we're working through all the details of completing that and going through the planning and zoning process with an anticipated SEDAR date for construction in December. I imagine that's all weather-dependent, so depending on if it's snowing in Kansas in December. Work Package Ten is West Elementary Schools. What I'm referencing it as, we have put together the naming committee for combining West Elementary, or Parker Elementary School with William Allen White, which will become the new West Elementary School, or the name that is presented to the board for your approval. We've had the first meeting of the naming committee. We hope in the next two to three weeks that we'll be able to finalize a name and bring that recommendation forward to you, anticipating by the end of October, if all goes well. We're also having conversations with students regarding colors and mascots. I was sharing with the naming committee that I've called this West Elementary School since the board approved redoing the brand-new construction or rebuilding the school, and found out as I was reviewing all of the history that it used to be called West Elementary School, and I didn't know that. So I don't know, maybe we should call it West Elementary School. But the naming committee, I know, is working on several names for you. Work Package Twelve is Bruny Elementary School, going through the final county commission meetings and planning and zoning meetings, starting construction hopefully in January. We'd like to do some early grading, if at all possible, in the fall months, still November and December. It will depend on the permitting process. So that's moving along fine. Work Package Thirteen is the Carl B. Bruce Middle School. That has been out to bid. We'll be bringing that bid results to you and the guaranteed max prices to the last meeting in October, as that's currently being vetted out with everyone that's bid on that package to date, with a tentative start of construction for Carl Bruce Middle School for November. And Work Package Fifteen is Rosedale, which we will review the bid results with you this evening, and the construction start date is in October. So as you can see, we have not slowed down. We're just moving right along through all of the work packages. So excited about that. Questions about this particular update?
I just got one quick question. The centralized kitchen, is that part of the Bid Package Thirteen?
No, it's a separate, it's a separate package altogether. We're doing that as a school district, so we're sending that out to bid, out to bid not as part of the bond projects. So the district will be sending that out. And I'll bring that information forward to you, but it's not in one of these work packages. It's associated with the Carl Bruce Middle School because we were forced to move the kitchen and the warehouse, and that's what you're thinking. It's a separate work package. Carl B. Bruce Work Package is just the bidding for that middle school. So we'll be doing that separate.
But that has been, I'm sorry. I thought we, we already had a bid on that. We already had a, selected a contractor.
We have a contractor. We did, you guys approved the contract for the construction manager at risk.
Right.
And the architect. And we've been working with the architect, and they're going through the preliminary development plans and planning. And then we will put that package out to bid.
Okay.
Actually, it's due out to bid pretty soon. I think it might be actually in October.
Okay.
It's going out to bid. But we have not actually put the full package out to bid yet.
Okay. Thank you.
And only because you mentioned in passing, is the warehouse reconstruction and renovation completed?
The warehouse is moved, and Mr. Clements could probably give you more detail. We've gotten just about everything out of the existing warehouse. We still have furniture in the existing warehouse that we still have to move out since we're not doing demolition or raising that facility for another month or so. We have time to move it. But it's just about complete. We've got all of our stuff moved to the new warehouse.
Thank you.
So they're excited about that. Okay? Other questions? All right. Let's look at some pictures, and I'll have Mr. Clements come up because, as you know, Mr. Stublo went on to brighter futures, I guess. Sure he misses us. He hasn't called us.
Yeah.
Yeah, he might take it or breathe it. See if I can get these pictures up. What I provided to you in your board docs is an overview, just like you've gotten every month, a monthly summary with pictures and some bullet points. So every board meeting, I like to try something a little bit new and different. So I thought I would actually just copy the pictures so we could show the pictures, and Mr. Clements is going to speak to the pictures and just give you a brief update so we don't, I mean, you have some of that information on your handouts already. So this is just the pictures that you'll see up here, but you have the pictures with the summary of each school. We'll start with Gloria Middle School.
Are you going to drive?
I'll try to drive.
All right. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board.
Evening.
Dr. Faust, Doug Clements, Director of Physical Properties. Glad to be here tonight. The picture you're seeing now, this is from Gloria Willis. Just very briefly, making good progress on that. I can tell you that the concrete slab-on grade is 100% complete. The steel, you can see there, about 90% complete from the last report I've got. The precast panels, the concrete panels you see on the outside, were 90% complete there.
I'm sorry, do we have those pictures? And they're under...
They're monthly, so I think the second attachment.
Okay.
Yeah.
There.
Superintendent, I cannot find them.
Yeah. See, this picture is all on one page for Gloria Willis.
Okay.
Single pages. I just blown the pictures up.
Yeah. Well, our first ones are the Welborn Elementary.
They may not be in the...
Got it. It's okay, we got them.
Gloria Willis.
Okay. So these were the precast panels I was, I was talking about. Those are 90% complete. Roofing, we're about 30% on the roofing here at Gloria Willis. The masonry, reporting at 65% complete. And the wall framing and the MEP or the mechanical electrical plumbing, rough in just about 10%. We're making progress there at Gloria Willis.
Basically, it's looking like a building.
It does look like a building.
Sort of. Not complete, but it's starting to look like an actual facility, an actual school. Sorry I'm going slow because these things, it's pretty jumping for some reason.
Okay, that's great.
So now we're going to go to Grant Elementary School. Pictures of these issues.
Right. That addition is also going well. You see the pictures there. The structural CMU or the concrete block that you see there, 100% complete now. Structural steel and the decking for the roof, 80% complete. They're working on the waterproofing on the exterior. That's about 30%. The masonry brick, then that comes along and does the veneer on the outside. They'll be starting that here in the next, actually, it says tomorrow. And then the roof slab, they'll pour that starting October 1st. So we'll be soon getting in the dry, hopefully, in that building and stay on, on track. All right?
You can tell we haven't practiced this together. I don't know, but you're trying to keep up with the picture.
I'm sorry, I'm just going right along. All right. You're the driver, you're supposed to keep up.
I'm drying my best. So this is Welborn.
Okay, we're at Welborn now. Welborn, we are actually pretty much in the dry there. The last time I was there, which honestly was probably a week and a half ago, they were working on finishing up some of the windows. They had one floor was completely done. They were working on another. I think the windows are probably done at this point. Actually going to start working on some drywall in the classrooms. Again, so we're making good progress on this school. It's exciting to see this school come up. Working on the permanent power. Again, these are just things here off your sheet. And working on the roofing there at Welborn. Okay?
Wyandotte.
And Wyandotte, on your sheet, this is actually, the pictures you're seeing is the Culinary Academy that has been constructed there. They're actually working on getting that completed. We have to do some final testing with the fire marshal before we can make that fully operational, and that should happen this week. And then we also have some bathroom renovations, the Phase Three. I don't think you have any pictures of those. They were hanging some final partitions today. I think they got some more in today for tomorrow. So those bathrooms should be finishing up here pretty, pretty quickly as well.
I'd just like to say I had an opportunity to go to, to see this at Wyandotte High School, and it's excellently well.
It's fun to see it.
Yes.
Yeah. It's a good thing for the students.
Good job.
Yeah.
Questions about the photo presentation? Good. Then we will move on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry I wasn't a very good driver.
We'll practice.
Try and get better. So Lee Moore with J. Dunn is going to review the bid tab and also some outreach efforts, and I think we'll start with the bid tab?
Sure.
Does that be all right?
Good evening, Madam President. Yeah. No, that's okay. Thank you. Good evening, board. Madam President, Dr. Faust, thank you.
Good evening.
And appreciate just the opportunity to be able to attend our event last week that you guys mentioned, so thank you for, for that. So tonight, I'm going to talk about Rosedale Middle School, and just to give you a quick update on that, so basically this project is a kitchen and cafeteria addition. And then we also have remodels, which includes a secure entrance and some career exploration classroom space. So that, as Dr. Mather mentioned, we're looking to break ground on that here in a couple weeks on the, on the addition, and then all the renovation work would happen next summer. So this is bid results from, this is actually the ninth bid package for the bond issue, if you're keeping track. And these are the bid results that we took back in July. And overall, we've got over 90 bids on this project. We got some pretty good coverage on the majority of the scopes. To kind of recap what this, what you're looking at on this bid tab, working from left to right, so the bid package in the blue with the white lettering, that is our, what we call our scope of work package. So that is the scope of work that the bidders will submit a bid on. You then work your way from left to right. We have our base bid amount, and then we keep track of the MW and L status of all of those bidders. The yellow highlighted contractors are those that were awarded the project based on their bid and the vetting of those bids. If you see the word combo, we're counting that bid in that section, but at the very end of the bid tab, there's a handful of combination bids. That is where a bidder will pick two or more of those individual scopes and combine that into one bid and offer sometimes some efficiency of bidding those together. Typically, I won't go line on it by line on them. I'm just kind of giving you kind of a summary of what, of what we're, we're looking at. Like I said, we got a lot of really good bid coverage on the, on the critical scopes of work. Some of the smaller scopes, we only got a couple bids, but that's not uncommon, some specialty work. We feel like we've got definitely a good hand, a good hand of trade partners here to work with on this project. And I do believe there were actually three combo bids on the very last page that, that were awarded based on their, based on their bids. So mechanical coverage outstanding. We actually received seven bids on that scope, so that's, that's a great, great value for the district there. No, that's okay. I really have nothing else to report unless you guys have any specific questions on, on this particular document.
So when you have a combo, how do you know what the bid combo price was?
Yeah. So good question. So if you look at combo 2B and 6A there, that very first combo, you've got DH PACE highlighted at $445,000. So they were awarded both of those scopes of work. If you look at the number in orange just above that, 458, that was the combination of the two low individual bids of that scope of work. So we took the low bid of the 2B package and the low bid of 6A package, and that equals 458. Therefore, the combo bid was less than that, and they were awarded the project for that, for those two particular scopes.
Okay, and what was the amount that they won the award?
445. The highlighted, the highlighted number there.
Okay.
I've got a question. On some of these, the highlighted ones are higher than, what makes it the higher, when you take the higher one over the chip?
Like the window treatments.
Yeah. Good question, I did not explain that properly. So the, the number in white in that scope of work line item was our bid day estimate. So that was just the, as, as part of our pre-construction services, we'll do estimates throughout the pre-construction phase, or final estimate. That's kind of the target number that we were shooting for on bid day with our bids. So that's not necessarily a bid number. That is just an estimate number.
But it's higher than the other, it's two above those, they're cheaper.
Oh.
Maybe not specifically about why somebody might appear not to have it.
Okay. I will have to get back to you on that one, because I do not have the answer for that, so.
Maybe in general, if somebody appears to be a low bid, but they're talking about the responsibility of the bidder, or the stuff of the work maybe wasn't complete.
Right, several, several opportunities. Sometimes bidders will just bid what they want to bid and not necessarily what our scope of work is, so they will clarify their bid and say, hey, we didn't pick up the architectural precast, we only picked up the structural precast. Well, we needed to include both of those, so you don't have a valid bid. That's probably the most common, is just not having a complete bid scope. Other qualifications would be, you know, did they bid the right material? Can they handle the work? Can they do the scope from a schedule standpoint? Have they had quality issues in the past? It starts getting really deep into kind of the vetting process of making sure that we hire the right trade partners for the particular scopes of work. So this particular instance, I don't have an answer for you, but I can bring one at the next board meeting. I apologize for not having that.
This is a pretty small scope of work, and that's what I was trying to suggest, is that just today, we were in a meeting, looking at another preliminary bid package, and one of the vendors just chose not to include $700,000 worth of what was in the scope of the work. So he appeared to be the low bid by $700,000, but the full scope wasn't addressed. That's what I was asking Lee about, and I think that's what he's describing here. So there are circumstances that you can't just look at the number. That's why when we say they vetted it out, they're going through the entire, every bid that comes in to them, they have to review to make sure that they've addressed everything that's in the actual scope that we put out there.
So to clarify, like in 9A and 9F, performance contracting, in that instance, it just says combo, and we were, and what I was hearing is, what would that number have been? Since it was a combination, what would, because we see it's more than what the others bid, because it's third down or fourth down, but what would that number have been?
Yeah, there's probably no science to the order of those, to where that combo lines up in that line item. But basically, their combo, they actually had a three-scope combo, so work package 7L, 9A, and 9F. So again, if you take the three low, individual low bids of those three scopes, you get $637,000, that's that number in orange. So their combo bid for those three scopes was $575,000, and so that's why they were awarded that, those three scopes.
But in all three scopes, they were never the lowest? That, that's, or maybe it's different? That's, because if, like on 7L, they're number two, the other one they're third, and the other one they're fourth. So it just wouldn't, it would seem that in one area, they would be the lowest.
So I think that the confusing part is, is that they are listed in the individual scopes, but they technically do not have a number. If I'm looking at it correctly, it looks like they only provided a combo bid for those three scopes. They didn't provide individual.
So they, so it probably would have been helpful to put them as the top one, instead of the fourth one? Because the assumption would be, oh, they would be the fourth highest. And so therefore, it would not have meant that.
Good feedback, and I can definitely fix that for the next bid tab. So, and, and again, there's, what's important to know about this is that contractors will look at several scopes of work potentially and say, I'm going to have staff on site, so I can do this other scope a little bit cheaper, because I'm already going to have people on the job doing this scope. And so that's why sometimes you'll see, they may provide a couple individual, single bids, but then they put a combo bid, and there's some cost efficiency that comes back to the, to the school district, because they're able to perform all of those scopes at a less value.
Do you limit combos to, to any specific job? So any contractor can, can provide a combo for all, any or all?
Right.
Okay.
And I'd say probably three is probably the max I've seen on these bid packages today.
Probably fair to say that it works out better for us. We're going for the cheap, the cheaper, less expensive route to get the work done. Okay, other questions before we move on?
Are all the contractors local contractors?
By definition, we have the LBE column there on the far right-hand side, so we've indicated what, what is designated as local based on the parameters. The parameters that define the local bidders.
But if there's no identification?
Then they're not considered any of these within, within the parameters that are set, correct?
Okay. Good. Let's see. Outreach?
Okay. Okay, so this should look pretty familiar. As we, we've kind of been using the same format now for the last several bid packages. But I'll tee this up just to, for those that haven't seen this document before. So we basically got this broken out in five sections, A, B, C, D, and E. Starting at the top, we've got, we list our bid date, and then we list the plan rooms that are invited. And then moving on the columns, moving from left to right. So the bidder recruitment and results summary, so we kind of have the description of the item. We have bond totals. So this bond total column basically totals up all the, all the, all the data from all nine work packages, including this work package 15. So I've hidden all the previous work packages, because we provided those in previous meetings. But just to keep a running total, we'll give you the bond total. And then the far, the far right column is the specific information for work package 15. So to give kind of an example of how this, how this reads, if you look at Section A, line item number one, outreach, so number of MBE bidders invited. So from a, from a total project, we've invited 1,138. On this particular work package 15, we've invited 121. You go to the next line item, which is number of MBE bidders responded to bid. That is how many bids we received that were considered MBE. And that's 56 total from the, for the complete bond issue to date, and then five for work package 15. Then you go down to line item number three, the number of bidders awarded. So that was the number of MBE bidders awarded. Bond totals is 16, work package 15 is one. And then we've got the actual dollars awarded, so line item number four. So to date, total bond issue, we've awarded a little over $8 million to MBE contractors, which line item number five shows that's 12.2% of the awarded dollars for the bond issue to date. And work package 15 specifically, it was $642,000, which was a little over 11% of that, of that package. So that same summary works for the Women Business Enterprise, which is Section B, and then Local Business Enterprise, which is Section C. Then you get down to D and E, and we basically total everything up, MW and L, and then non-MW and L. And the format is similar. We show how many bidders were invited, how many bidders bid the project, how many were awarded, and then we have percentages there as well. So overall, work package 15 is falling pretty consistent with kind of what we've seen on the bond totals to date, at least for the Minority Business Enterprise and Women Business Enterprise, so. Does that?
You know, we've had this discussion before, and in the future, could we keep minority women and local separate? You can have a truer, perhaps a true reflection, because they're, a minority is not a woman, right? In, in your designation, okay.
Right.
And J. Dunn is local.
Say that again.
And J. Dunn is local. So if J. Dunn received any of this package, there is just not a true, in my opinion, comparison.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And I think the intent of Section A, B, and C is to have that separated.
Yeah, I thought, I thought it was, but.
Yeah.
You'd ask us to go back and do that, so we separated them again? But we kept the totals too, together, so you'd have both.
Yeah, we just.
So keep it.
We like numbers. We like numbers. Like numbers.
It's a lot of information, I.
It sure is, but it helps.
Okay.
Thank you.
Could you, could you help me out? Could you, could you explain line item, line item three?
A3, number of Minority Business Enterprise bidders awarded.
Right.
So that was how many?
16 is, okay.
16 is total for all nine packages that we've bid out, and then there was one that was awarded for work package 15. And those would be the yellow highlighted, the, the yellow highlighted on the bid tab are the bidders that were awarded work, as we've, as we review the bid tabs.
There's no extra weighted scores for minority or women or local businesses, right? There's no extra credit or extra points given? It's just a flat rating scale? Is that right?
It's based on low bid, most responsible, so I'm not sure when you say extra points are, and there's no weight to it, based on minority women, local, right? As you recall, J. Dunn's been working hard, and you all had the opportunity to go to that, to continue to try to do outreach, to encourage and try to get minority women and locally owned businesses to bid, so.
It seems they are bidding, but however, there may be 2,000 off or, you know, 1,000 off of that lowest bid, so, you know. Or it's not a, like the combination will, you know, because we don't know the actual number, then they're right either above or below it, so there's no way, you know, to really know. They just have to kind of throw out there an estimate.
Okay. So I think we've got one more document, and this was just some supplementary information that through this process over the last year, we've been asked to provide some additional information. So this is the sheet that I call just bidder reasons for not bidding. And in prior meetings, we were asked to kind of try to give you all information on why people aren't bidding projects. And so once we bid the project, we'll go back and do some random calls to get some of that feedback. And so that's what this includes. And so again, working from left to right. So the work package number is work package 15. We include all the out-to-bid, bid dates, kind of the timing of the bids, how long they were on the, on the street to bid, and then the reasons for bidding there in that middle column. And then the quantity is over to your right. And so for this particular project, 33 subs were called. Out of those, 22 noted current workload is full, which is to be expected. There is a lot of construction work out right now. We are hearing a lot of that. Had one of our glazers that we do a lot of work with, and we just took bids for John Fisk today, and they're like, well, we just, we can't handle any more workload, which we appreciate, because we don't want to overextend bidders and then have problems on the project later on. But it does kind of start to limit some of your bid results if, if people are busy, so. But that's, that's not going to change. We have another seven packages over the next four months to bid for your, for your projects. And so we'll continue to recruit hard and get the bidders to the table. We did just take bids on John Fisk Elementary today, so we'll be hopefully presenting that, as well as the Carl B. Bruce bid results at the October 23rd meeting.
I had a question. On the first one, it said not enough time to put the bids together. What's the protocol when you send out information to people to put bids together? What's the normal timeframe?
It depends. I, we usually shoot for three to four weeks. That gives you time to obviously recruit. We'll have a pre-bid meeting, which typically, if it's on like an existing site at John Fisk, we would have the bidders come out and take a look at the existing site. And then, and then the bid date, and if there's any other job site walkthroughs, if it's an existing building. So I would say three to four weeks is pretty normal, and we kind of base that on the size of the project. If it's a smaller project, you know, we might only have it on the street three weeks. If it's a large project like the middle school, we would have it on the street at least four weeks, so. That particular note was one of the original notes we had on this forum, and then we were asked to kind of provide some more detail. And so the, the five or six line items that are justified to the right underneath that are kind of, you kind of peel the onion back and start asking why, you know, why do you say you were too busy? And then you kind of start getting down to the root cause of the reasons why they weren't bidding. So that kind of explains that particular line item. Okay? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson.
Vacancy update, Mr. Walter Thompson?
Madam President.
Good evening.
Dr. Faust, board.
Good evening.
My name is Walt Thompson, and I oversee HR. Joining me is Mrs. Cynthia Folks, who is Director of Recruiting.
Good evening, Dr. Lynn, Dr. Faust, and the board members. This is our monthly recruitment update, and I believe this is part of the Human Resource Report, so I don't know if we can go back to that or not. I believe you have in your document the vacancy report, which has at the top of the page, the high schools, the middle schools, elementary schools, as well as our Special Education Department. And so I'm happy to report that, speaking a little bit ahead, if we could go back out of this report, if at all possible, and it should be the one right before the beginning of the HR annual report. But I'll keep speaking in the interest of time. Since last month, we actually have had several offers extended and accepted. And so you are seeing a pool of vacancies that are less than 30 days ago. In light of some of the things that Dr. Faust has already stated with respect to principals and meetings, the recruitment team is also following up with meetings to ascertain where we really need to be with the principals going forward, now that we've been involved for a month into our school. And so just want to leave it open in case you have any particular questions, but those, where we decreased was in the high school area from last month, in the middle school area, as well as special education. So this is just a snapshot and a point in time for the past month. Any questions?
And was the, was some of these positions due to resignations that are posted here?
Yes.
Okay, because I hadn't seen, like the career exploration one. It appears that that may have been a new one?
The freshman 101 that's in the high school one would have been a resignation. The one that is in the middle school actually has been there.
Okay.
There are two different ones, one in the middle school and one in the high school.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? All right, then if there's nothing else, I'll get off, and we can go forward.
Joining me next will be members of HR. Joining me next will, will be members of HR. This is Jody Mitchell, Amy Jo Troyer, and Shelly Beach.
Okay, Dr. Faust, the force of the superintendent?
Yes, I would ask that the Kansas City Board of Education accept the Human Resource Annual Report for the 2017-2018 as submitted by Walter Thomas, interim Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources.
Ben moved and seconded. Now, discussion, please. Are they going to go over it?
Good evening, Board. Good evening, Dr. Faust.
Good evening.
We are pleased to be before you this evening to review the Human Resources Annual Report for the 2017-2018 school year. And so, way too fast. We're going to, goodness, this is very jumping. We're going to start with our attrition data. During the 2017-2018 school year, we retained eighty-four percent of our, of our staff, and this is total district certified and classified. So eighty-four percent of our staff did return for that school year. We did lose sixteen percent of our staff due to a variety of different reasons, as noted on the slide. And that represented five hundred and seventy-four staff members. In response to that, we turned around and hired and welcomed eight hundred and sixty-seven new employees into the district. Sixty-one percent of those were our classified staff and thirty-nine percent certified. And we wanted to break that down just a little bit further for you, for the new hires, for the certified group. So that sixteen percent that you see kind of cut out of the pie there, that represents the new hires in, in the overall total of the certified group. So you see that sixteen percent there sitting out and the ethnicity that's tied to those three hundred and forty-two hires.
In the same way we broke that data, data down for our new hires, we did that for active employees as well. So the series of the next four slides will show you total data of all active employees. And then of that same total data, the categories of certified, classified, and then administrators. I'll move through those so you're able to see those as well. So of the active employees, you see a total of three thousand, six hundred, sixty-three active employees and the ethnicity breakdowns there. Of those total, two thousand and sixty-nine were considered certified and those breakdowns. Of the thirty-six, sixty-three, fourteen hundred and fifty-five were considered classified and their respective breakdown. And then finally, of the thirty-six, sixty-three, one hundred and forty-five categorized as administrators and their respective breakdown.
Good evening. The next slide you'll notice is the alternative programs, and we've talked with you often about alternative programs. This past school year, there were forty-three staff members that were recruited into our alternative programs. That was two percent of our total staff that was hired. And you'll see the two percent breakdown there is that forty-three percent. So it's a, a small group, but it is about two percent of the staff, and you can see the ethnicity breakdown there. And then the next slide has to do with residency. You'll see on the 2017-2018 certified staff residency, eighty-three percent were non-resident, seventeen percent were residents. And then on the 2017-2018 classified staff residency, it was seventy-six percent were Wyandotte County residents and twenty-four percent were non-residents.
And so I've had the opportunity to be up here over the past several months, and I believe I've provided hopefully enough information to answer some of your initial questions. So I have just a few slides to present to you this evening. The first one is about the fact that for the 2017-2018 school year, we had a candidate pool of over nine thousand applications, and you see the top five states that they came from. In addition to that, you also had the opportunity to see where the applicants are stating they found out about any type of job posting, whether it was viral through social media or through other means. This gives us a good idea of some of those areas that we can keep for the future that get to our applicants and represent a great pool to go forward. In addition to that, just as a recap, there were fifty-four different locations that we attended, either by hosting forty-four different out-of-state, meaning outside of the greater Kansas City area, and then ten in-state opportunities that we had throughout the Kansas City area, primarily on the Kansas side, at the libraries that we talked about earlier, here at central office, at some of the schools within our Kansas City, Kansas area, and partnering with other entities such as the Chamber as well as Kansas Works. The primary top five areas where overall we had colleges where we recruited multiple individuals from, this would be represented here, and that's what you're seeing. By no means does this include all of the colleges, but it gives you a snapshot. And so everything that you've heard up until this point has been about the finalization of reports for the 2017-2018 school year. We wanted to just give you a snapshot over the next four slides very briefly about where we are starting out with 2018-2019. So these are just data points for your consideration. This first slide speaks about the new hires that we have to date and their ethnicities as self-identified by them. Next, you have the certified new hires, again, as reported by them for their ethnicity. Next, we have the classified. Same information, same types of information that we wanted to make sure that you had at your disposal. And last but not least, the administrators who have been hired to date in total, in terms of the new hires and their ethnicity as self-reported. One last slide.
Board, we're pleased to share with you that to date, with taking on substitutes in-house in the district, we are reporting an active subpool of two hundred and forty-eight staff members and an average fill rate to date for the seven, pardon me, for the eighteen, nineteen school year of ninety percent.
Way to go. I would like to say thank you for the detailed slides, especially because you have put the information in that we requested to know more details. We appreciate how hard you guys have been working to help with recruitment efforts move along swiftly and be able to have more communication with our applicants. So I really appreciate that. As well as the substitute rate, we're pulling for everybody to make sure that we can use fill rates so that our students have that teacher in the room. And so again, I really appreciate you guys' efforts, and thank you so much for the detailed report.
Right.
And we'd like to recognize the entire team now at this time. Where are we, team?
I have a quick question, okay? Of the new recruits, do we know if they came, if they came by way of one of the, the job fairs that you performed?
It's weird. Yes, we would at least know when we originally met them. Also, it is possible that if we were at a college and they decided to come to one of our central office career fairs and travel here so they could see buildings and things of that nature, that may have been the point at which they were considered for a possible hire.
I got you.
So in some cases, an individual may have been with us twice.
Okay, okay. Do you track that information? Do you log that information?
We do track that information.
Good. Thanks.
Well, we all thank you. Just one question on this slide that entitled "Projections 2018-19." I, I, you know, in the future, again, maybe we can have a page number, Dr. Faust. What's the number of, you have the ethnicity, but did I miss the number? Two thousand eighteen, nineteen certified new hire? Is a number on here?
It's in your full board report.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I have a question. On the alternative program, the ninety-eight percent, I mean, can you give us a little bit more detail on that?
Yes, that ninety-eight percent is referring to the other staff that's not considered alternative certified staff.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I was trying to figure out where you got the ninety-eight.
Yeah, great question.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Faust. You, this is an item you asked for us to accept. Need a motion just for the record to accept, please?
So moved.
Seconded. Been moved and seconded to accept the Human Resource Annual Report for 2017-18. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Excuse me.
Now, we have the data, and then we're going to go and make some analysis of things because there's still a growing need to try to find more minority teachers. And I know it's not an easy task, but just want to make sure, because when we look at this, we definitely, our Hispanic population is large, and we definitely need to meet their needs, and they need to know, because there's too much data out there that says children need to see themselves. And when you're looking at fifty percent, and I don't know the exact number, somebody can correct me, but it needs to be more. And we don't want to turn a blind eye. Got good data, now let's go and work and see what we can do to improve that. So that would be my concern. And I do want to thank you, did an awesome job, but let's remember, we need to do something. Just don't want to have the numbers and not do anything with it.
Thank you, Mrs. Page.
You care to comment?
Oh, yes, I mean, we've spoken about that, and that is our intent, to make sure that we are looking at universities where we will have a predominant, if we're looking for Spanish speakers, where do we, where will we get those individuals? And that is a task that I have spoken with Ms. Folks about, so we are aware. What we run into is that we're not the only ones who are looking for, for those individuals, and so those bilingual candidates are extremely hard to find. But we are, we are actually, I've tasked them to look for those.
And Dr. Faust, I did talk to Jason a little bit to see how we can expand our diploma programs, because we have an articulation agreement with KU for now, but also to think about other universities. Maybe we can think about maybe Emporia or some of the other schools that offer that teaching certificate to be able to get a fast track like we were able to do with KU.
And Dr. Faust, we're loading up our agenda for the retreat, so perhaps there could be a little time we squeeze in to broaden this discussion. We'll be here like two months on one day. All right. So, any other discussion, please? Ready for the vote, please? All in favor, accepting the annual report, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay? Motion passed. Next?
I said the Kansas City Board of Education accept a report on the Kansas Education Systems Accreditation, KISA, outside visiting team's spring report as submitted by Marcy Clay, Assistant Superintendent.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Dr. Faust, and I'm going to ask Mr. King to join me. In this report, you were given a copy of the spring report, summer report from the outside visitation team as part of the KISA process. And so what I want to do is I don't want to go through it by detail, but just kind of lift up some of the highlights from the summer report. Just to refresh your memory, it was one visit, and it was in the spring. Last year was year one for us. We are now in year two, so. And then Mr. King is going to talk about, if you noticed in the report, there's a section called "Challenges for Relevance" and one for "Relationships," and so he's going to address what we're already doing around those challenges that are listed in the report. So let, let me lift the strengths that were listed for. If you remember, we picked two Rs. The district, the staff, the building leaderships teams, the district leadership team picked two Rs. Relevance and relationships. Very good, Mr. All right. And so those are the two Rs that the outside visitation team focused on when they came in the spring. So in regards to relevance, what they, I'll call them kudos. The kudos that were received for relevance was around Diploma Plus. It was around the guaranteed and viable curriculum that we have in the district. It is around the Marzano Model of Instruction. If you remember, that is our theory of action. We talked a lot about that last year. Some of the data that the executive directors have brought before you over the past year has been around the Marzano Model of Instruction and its relationship to the adult data that they have presented in front of you. We also got kudos for our technology, for our 101 technology at the high school level and the middle school level. But I also want to remind you, I believe it was last year, that we also kind of up that accessibility to our elementary students as well. It's not one-on-one yet, but it's still better than it was before. They also talked about in grade six through nine, the fact that we are having individualized plans of study for our students. So that was a strength in regards to the relevance section. They talked about the tiered levels of instruction from Marzano, and they also talked about the academies at the high school level. If you remember, Dr. Strickland and the executive directors talked to you about the academies that we had started building on, the pathways, and that was also part of the bond part in regards to the flex space that you all voted to make sure that our bond project included. And then they talked about Infinite Campus, which is what we're just implementing this year, a new data system to help us get better at collecting our data. So those, and the relationship part, the kudos that we received was around, remember the Saturday Language Academy when Ms. Scott presented to you the project around Hazel Grove? An opportunity for, I think it was five to six, seven Saturdays where, where our ESL families and students came, and we really focused on providing them with some information on teaching and learning for their children, provided an opportunity for fam, for parents to come and maybe learn English. And so it was a really good success. Ms. Scott is doing that again this year, and so we got kudos for that in this spring report. We also got kudos for the fact that our early childhood slash head start had social workers, the family service workers that go and do home visits, they work with our families, they help our families understand that they are the primary, the first teacher of their children. And then you also helped with that family relationship when you all voted and asked Dr. Mather to include in her budget, social workers and counselors, more counselors. And so we were, we will probably receive more kudos for that this year because we've put those things in place. And then one other thing that they gave kudos for was the work that Diploma Plus has done in the community around our business partnerships. Remember, Dr. Strickland mentioned to you last year about those community partnerships and the role that they play in the Diploma Plus work that we're doing at the high school level. So, so those are the kudos that were received. We also received challenges, and we were well aware of that, we knew that. That's part of the whole accreditation process, is how do you get better? What do you enhance? What do you improve on? So I'm going to let Mr. King address the things that we're already doing to address those challenges.
Good evening, Madam President, Board members, Dr. Faust. One of the areas in which they saw as a challenge was the alignment of our district professional learning along with professional learning that's happening at the buildings. So we're making a move towards that, and that what's going to happen at the district professional learnings is going to be followed up what's happening at the buildings, and there will, there will be a connection from professional learning to professional learning session. October 12th is our first launch of this. We're going to be, instead of having pure content area meetings, we're going to be meeting at each of the high schools and the teachers of those high schools... And the teachers of those high schools, as well as the teachers from all the feeder, middle, and elementary schools and early childhood centers, will meet at those particular high schools. So it's a picture of all the children from when they first enter us until they graduate, everyone being together for that certain group of kids. And the focus on that will be some high yield strategies that teachers will see in action. They'll experience them, as students would experience them, and then actually be able to practice them and plan how they're gonna use them, with the intention of them actually implementing them the next week at school. And that will be part of what we'll be doing. We'll be collecting evidence, we'll be identifying what evidence we want to look at to determine, first of all, what it looks like when it's implemented properly, and then how we go about collecting that information as we go. And that addresses one of the other challenges they had about collecting data, the data that we have. So that's one way in which we're going to be doing that. Also, there is questions about the number of new and inexperienced teachers that we have. Our professional learning will also be focusing on that. One of the ideas that we're bouncing around, we haven't actually landed on yet, is that as part of that professional learning, we may pull those teachers off to a different group, that they get a more intensive training that lifts them up faster and catches them up with the stuff they don't have.
So, we're in year two.
Mr. King?
Oh, I'm sorry.
How is, how Sumner gonna fit into this thing on October 12th, since they don't have a cluster?
Because Sumner will be joining Wyandotte. That's a good question. Thank you.
Okay, so they'll be at Wyandotte?
Yeah, they'll be with Wyandotte.
Okay.
Also, too, Board, just to let you know that Mr. King is working with a very large group of people who he's bringing together to really think with him and study with him and really look at what's the best plan to put in place. And so we're talking about curriculum, people from the curriculum department, people from the instructional side of the House and the districts, so really working together and planning and facilitating, but also, too, lifting up or making sure that we use our best instructional coaches. And eventually, Dr. Faust is pushing us to also think about putting in front of professional development our rock star teachers, who could probably teach us a lot about good instructional strategies that really hit the standards. So as we put this in place, we'll continue to build and revise and tweak until we get it to a point that we really feel it's gonna be a strong professional development plan. It will also take care of, if you remember in the report, it talked about silos at, there seemed to be this perspective that there were silos in the district. And so really talking about a cluster-like professional development plan should take care of that silo perspective that some of our schools have. So this will be a good thing. So as we go into year two, we will have another visit. My understanding is, I thought there was two, but they must have revised it. They're still doing one, and it'll be in the spring again. And at that time, they'll continue to meet with district leaders. But they also, our chairperson for the OVT kind of is flexible with us and says, what else would you like for us to do when we come out and visit with you? And just a reminder that Mr. King, Mr. Rand, and I are going to a workshop at the end of October, and we will hear more about some of the tweaks and revisions that the state has put in this process. So we'll make sure that we share that with Dr. Faust, and then he can let us know if he wants us to do a board presentation. So, good, good, for me, I thought it was good, but I'd also appreciated the challenges that they presented for us to take a look at, to get better at. Any questions? Thank you.
I have a question. So what are we doing to help raise the awareness for the Diploma Plus? There's a lot of confusion or still some unclarity about each school's specializations, and some parents are still not clear as far as how their students align with that Diploma Plus. Are we doing anything to help inform teachers how to wrap their students around that concept and parents?
Dr. Strickland?
Yeah, actually, our Diploma Plus Department and our Communications Department have put together a lot of materials to make available at the schools. And so when they are there, our CCCs at the school and our facilitators at the school are using that information to help inform parents about the academies and what those academies specialize in and how that will support students in those areas. So to the credit of our Communications Department, they've put together some very professional-looking branding material, branded material to help inform families and communities about that.
And so does this also include 11th and 12th graders to help them stay informed in how they can specialize in an area before they graduate?
Absolutely, yes.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Along with that, isn't a part of that information, is a part of the Infinite Campus, whereas parents can get information from there as well as going to the district website?
Yes, Infinite Campus, working correctly allows all of our parents to have access to that, and we're ironing out those details now.
Right, and as well as the listening tours, if they're interested, they can come to that. I understand Infinite Campus is for parents as well as for students. Is there any paperwork that we can get as a board to learn about it, other than just reading what it does on the, on the website?
I'm sure that we can put something together to make sure the board has access to that, so they're fully informed about what Infinite Campus does.
Because I think it's a good program that can be, that can be utilized throughout for everyone. I would just like some more information about it, that's all.
We're gonna make sure you have that, so you can say that out loud a lot as we go through our growing pains of getting ready to implement it.
Especially when it works proper.
Especially when it works right, because we are going through implementation, growing pains, but eventually it will be a resource that is very important to everyone. But I don't want to mislead you. It is, but you having that information will be very helpful.
Okay, thank you.
And be able to be ambassadors for it as we move forward with it.
And which campus has the education silo? Which high school focuses on the education? Academy?
The Teaching Academy.
The Teaching Academy? Does anyone?
Washington High School.
Okay. And so that, that's an opportunity for us to maybe partner and get that awareness out to the students who want to be teachers in the future?
Yes.
Although there is restriction that I recently found out that the schools are divided, so only Schlegel can go to Washington District, right? And then only Harmon and Wyandotte?
Yeah, right now, because of some of the transportation limitations and being able to logistically manage that, Schlegel and Washington are paired, and Harmon and Wyandotte are paired. In the perfect scenario, we'll create a system that they can go across. But as we initiated this, that was some of the management decisions that we needed to make in order to be able to logistically be able to handle and have the capacity to do that from the onset here.
So due to the need for educators, can we look more at that model to make sure that we're trying to help students who want to be educators? Possibly, you know, get that availability, so we can maybe have the Grow Your Own Pipeline or something to help with that effort? So thank you.
Harmon has it, too.
Harmon has it, too.
Harmon has the Teaching Academy, too.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so.
Also, one of the things that Alan didn't share, they did a presentation for our principals on last Tuesday. And one of the things that, when Marcy and I were speaking, our teachers have actually stated that one of their issues is that what they had been teaching and what the state was looking for were two opposite things. They would teach something, but it wasn't the same as what the state was asking for. So what Alan and his team has been tasked with is to align it to the state. We don't align to a test. We don't teach to a test. We teach to the standards. And so I definitely want everyone to understand that. But, you know, when you sit down, and we've all been in that predicament where you sit down and you're not prepared for a test or an assessment and what that feels like, just imagine what some of our kids feel like when they're there near three years behind in reading or their math wasn't taught at the standard that it was supposed to have been. And so that's what our teachers are crying out for. And so that's the main purpose of having our ICs in our buildings and making sure that they, the teachers get the support they're needing, because bottom line, it's for our kids. And so that's what we're, our focus is. Alan has been tasked with not just curriculum, but curriculum and instruction. They no longer live on two opposite sides of the building. They live in one house. The special ed had ICs, so I always say what's good for, special ed is good for our general ed. We have ESL ICs. They were on another side of the building. They're all now under their house, so the curriculum and instruction goes out and farmed out to everyone, so all teachers can benefit, whether you are an ESL teacher, a special ed teacher, general ed teacher, his department will be helping with that practice.
Good. Question? You have a question?
Thank you.
Thank you. Then we need a motion, please, to accept the report of KISA. Got it right that time, Ms. Clay.
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded to accept the report on the Kansas Education Systems Accreditation. All in favor, say aye, is a discussion, excuse me? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Post nay? Motion passed. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we have the consent agenda. Any items, anyone wants to pull?
I think C.
C, the Human Resource Reporting Recommendations?
Yeah.
We'll set aside. Any others? Okay, like have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus, minus item C. Any discussion, well, motion, please?
So moved.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda item, excuse me, minus item C, which is the Human Resource Reporting Recommendations. Now, discussion. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Post nay? That motion passed. Would you like to deal with C now or later date? Later time?
We can deal with it now. I just have a question about, let me find it here.
While he's waiting, I, we have made recommendations to improve this report, and it still looks the same, because we don't have quite details of why the salaries vary from one person to another, although it's the same title. Do we have an idea as to when we're gonna review that part, to look for more details that we had discussed earlier, or is that something we need to revisit?
Would you like to comment, or do you know of those recommendations?
Don't know.
Okay. I would ask that, why don't we all reconsider our conversations that I think we had, one, during perhaps the, our listening tour, two, as a result of the Vicky Harris report, and three, just general conversation. Mr. Goheen, do you remember any others that we had?
I don't remember any others specifically.
Okay, so I would ask that, maybe you send, do you want us to receive those, or do you want me to receive those?
Well, as I remember, we had asked for this with the interim superintendent. She says she will leave some recommendations for the updating of report.
Right. We'll have to research that.
Okay.
So if, if, if permitted, again, I'll ask, do you want to receive it, do you want us jointly to receive it?
It doesn't, I mean, I can receive it.
Okay, and then, can you, Ms. Westfall, perhaps, look back into any reports that Dr. Ford left, as far as recommendations? But that we send?
I'm sorry.
You know what we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, that we send Dr. Faust a list of recommendations and our questions, how we make this report clearer, details that we may feel that's necessary. One, I remember that we were gonna put all the teachers together, not, not spread around. One is a parent, is teacher specialist, one is custodian, but grouped by, by categories. That I remember.
And why the salary may differ, because, you know, of one person to the next. There was some discussion around that.
But isn't it based on experience that a person has?
We don't know, we're just looking.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't know about looking at it.
It's questions on formatting the report, so that if we have questions, they're, hopefully they're easier to resolve, because of the manner in which it's presented.
When Dr. Ford was here, she gave us an, well, we had talked about it, she showed an example of what her report looked like in Topeka, which made it more efficient and more detailed versus what we get.
So you're, in other words, you're asking that if there's a difference in pay, you want it to be specified on, in this report?
Because right now, it's unclear.
So. It's not clear, so why would you need to have that?
No.
If you're trusting the individuals to be able to apply for the job and then for them to hire the individuals to get paid?
Based on their experience and everything else?
You just assumed that it's based on experience.
Yeah.
But that's the assumption. I mean, we don't know.
That's, that's the HR department's job. There's a, there's a salary scale they follow, and we've, we've received that several times, showing us that with this much experience, you're here.
Based on this, where do we even know where they are on the scale?
Well, instead of trying to get what the people are being paid, I would think that you would want that information of the salary scale to know what, how they operate, to look at that information prior to getting this.
That's why we at least need to open it for discussion, to see what can be included on there or how it can be modified. But at least, you know, once we get those recommendations, we can discuss it.
Right.
I think.
So as it stands now, let's email the recommendations and our questions or concerns. If you feel that that is not something you would want, email that also. We had also mentioned that, let's say Sally Smith gets this salary because they are at Step Four, Class B. So it's just, we need to have that conversation. Now, again, I don't know where we had that conversation, but we'll decide, we'll figure it out. We'll figure it out. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. Other questions, Mr. Brown, on that? Oh, yeah, your question.
I do have. I just have a question about item number 19, the coach. This is, I guess, we've made a conditional offer for employment for a coach. I'd just like to know what kind of, is that a seasonal job?
That's an assistant job.
Assistant to what?
Let me research that.
Okay.
It's, it's an assistant.
Well, I see, that's not the only one. There's like 16?
Yeah, I'll just say coach.
Supplemental contracts is what they.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm, they are what now?
It's a supplemental contract.
So.
Or sports, or an activity.
Okay.
I know that the 2966 cost is for an assistant coach on a varsity level in a high school. But I'll research it and, and break that down to you.
And so is, so is this figure annual, monthly? It wouldn't be daily, we know that.
It's an annual. It's an annual.
Annual. Okay. All right, so, well, you know, others say daily, others say hourly, that says nothing.
Whereas number 16, who's paid less, probably is a lesser of a coach. Is there only paid?
Yeah, it could be.
The coaching sal, the coaching salaries are all under the negotiated agreement
Right.
For the amounts, and so it just depends on what the position is.
Right.
Please email your questions, concerns to Dr. Faust, and we'll decide when we'll be able and how we'll be able to address this. Right. The questions are in the future. No one is, Mr. Brown, are you satisfied with your question, question being answered? Are you prepared to, or someone, we need a motion to accept the, what is this? HR Report and Recommendations.
I move that we accept the report from HR, from the recommendations.
The movement is seconded. Discussion. Discussion. Discussion's been noted of what to send. Dr. Faust, the email, and we'll determine when and how we have that discussion. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Post nay, the Human Resource Reporting Recommendations is approved. Move to payment of bills. Any questions? Motion, we need a motion, please.
I move we pay our bills.
Second. Been moved and seconded to pay our bills. Discussion. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Post nay, motion pass. Pay the bills. Okay. This one. Ladies and gentlemen, I need a motion for the board to recess into executive session at 6:35 for five minutes?
Yes.
Okay, to discuss an individual employee's performance.
So we're doing B first?
Not doing, well, you want A first or you want B first?
I just needed to know which one you do.
Just need to know to write it down.
If you're jumping down.
Doing B, that's the five minute one.
Okay, then let's do A. Correction, delete all of that. Need a motion, and this is not going to be five minutes. All right. I need a motion for the board to reassess into executive session at 6:35 for 20 minutes to discuss individual contracts pursuant to an exception for non-elected personnel on the Kansas Open Meetings Act. The board will return to open session at 6:55 with possible action to follow. That's what it says.
The action to follow is on the.
With no possible action to follow.
Should we do 6:40?
Um, no. It may take 20 minutes.
6:40 to 7:00?
Oh, you want 6:40, oh, excuse me, not 6:35. Okay, 6:40. All right, need more time. So I need the motion for the board to recess in executive session at 6:40 for 20 minutes. 6:80, 7:10, come back at 7:10 with no possible?
No action to follow.
Action to follow, so move and seconded. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Post nay. We will recess.